...to replace. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Terry, would you do this?
I will, let's pray. That's gracious heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for loving us. I pray that you take control of the meeting tonight and give us wisdom, Lord, as we make decisions for the district, which be with us in blessings. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Call the meeting in order. Do you have a form? I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda. First by Duane. Second by Kyle. All in favor? Aye aye aye. Motion carried. Next, special reports.
Hey, we have Ms. Chapp on here. She is going to share with us about work keys, which is part of the Arkansas Workforce Service. Hold on a minute here.
Well, as Audrey said, work keys has been a part of the workforce services through Arkansas, through the state of Arkansas for about 20 years. But as of May of this year, it has now been moved into the public school system. I know it's been discussed, Audrey had already heard about it, but this was kind of a last minute move on the part of the legislator, legislature. So we now have a new mandatory assessment to do this year. Basically, this is testing for the National Career Readiness Certification, and that fits right in with our CTE program, but this is also something that will benefit all of our students. Because even the kids who are going to college work. The vast majority of them work while they're in college. Some of them work before they start college. Some of them get out of college and can't find a job in their field, so they work in another area. So this is going to be good for everybody, not just the CTE kids. But basically, do our kids need it? Yes, they can all benefit. Because sooner or later, just about everybody works. And I put some statistics up here. Basically, 53% of college graduates are unemployed or working in a job that doesn't need their degree. This certificate will help those. 41% of recent graduates and 39% of all college graduates work in a job that doesn't require a college degree. It'll help those. 70% works in any one time. 43% of full-time college students and 81% of part-time college students work more than 20 hours a week. It's going to help those too. So it's really going to help everybody. The state of Arkansas has been pushing this for a while. It's become very well-known in the Delta and in South Arkansas, and part of that is because those were the most economically depressed areas of the state. That's where the state started pushing things. But this is now moving into Northwest Arkansas, and this has been a nationwide thing for quite a few years. Benefits, basically, it's going to prove to employers that a lot of our kids meet the qualifications of the job, and they will not, the employers won't feel like they're wasting time hiring people and finding out they can't do it. This is kind of proof that they can do it before they get started. We'll also strengthen the student success plans, and basically hopefully help a lot of our kids that are entering the workforce get into higher paying positions because they've proven they have some skills. It's now law, we are required to offer the testing and the curriculum that goes with it, the study curriculum, to all 10th through 12th graders. It is mandatory that they take this sometime before 12th grade. There is a way to opt out, but it's just not advised. And honestly, this is a good thing. It's not something they need to think about opting out of. So we are looking at working with 12th grade this year at St. Paul and at Huntsville High since this was kind of sprung on us at the last minute. We'll have maybe things a little more live out after this first year. Students will test, and if they pass the test, and passing is a pretty high mark, if they pass, the lowest level of achievement will be bronze, and then silver the next up, gold and platinum. I've had one of our teachers at the high school looking over the curriculum, one of the English teachers, and then one of the math teachers has agreed to do this, she just hasn't been able to do it yet. But what we're finding is that if the students do reach those upper levels on the exam, they have some pretty serious skills. This is not something that's going to be easy peasy for the kids. So it's going to take some work, but it's going to really show that they have some merit to it too when they make those levels. It's an industry-recognized standard. The three tests that they will take will be applied math, graphic literacy, and workplace documents. So these will be tests that find out whether they can use the literacy and math skills they've learned in school in real workplace situations. So it's basically an application-type test, but as the teacher that I checked with the other day told me, these are not going to be easy to score well on. He said it even pushed him, he had to slow down and think about some things.
You're answering questions that I have already, so I'll just pick one.
Oh, my Philfrick asked questions?
So it is a, so it is a difficult exam.
Yes.
And you don't know what the percentage is, but it's, it takes, it takes some upper-level skills in order to pass the exam. And what if they don't pass it?
Well, I'm getting to that, I promise. Passing is either 75 or 80%. I can't, honestly, at the moment, I can't remember which, and I know I'm just kind of nervous, but 75% to basically get a bronze. So we're talking, you know, upper, probably 90% to get a double or a platinum. As far as the rest of your questions?
Um.
No, no, that's fine. I want you to, I want you to be interested enough to wonder about things, and I'm going to tell the kids, life doesn't have an easy button, and this isn't easy either. If you want this, you're probably going to have to knuckle down and do some extra studying. Because there's no guarantee that just because they take the test, they will earn a certificate. They have to score at least at the bronze level on all three exams to receive any certificate at all.
So is this a set curriculum? I mean, you have, you're going to teach them, how are they supposed to know these skills? I don't understand.
There is an online curriculum that is made available to the students for free by the state of Arkansas. Most of these CTE courses, the way the curriculums are already structured, have a lot of these skills embedded. But there's also a general curriculum available to everyone, so that even the students not involved in CTE courses can spend some time working through that. It starts with a pre-test and then places them wherever they need to be to work on the skills that are above the level where they scored, and then hopefully they progress to the end of the curriculum and they're able to test and do well.
So for instance, a welder, he's learning welding, then you have extracurricular stuff that he could study about the welding, and then when he's mastered this class, he takes this test.
It's not about, it would not be welding, it would be more the literacy and math skills that apply to general, the general area of employment in different positions. Workforce documents, applying the math skills, which would have to do with welding, being able to read the specs, things like that.
And is it, it's a harder version than, could we allow it to act as like some, just a harder version of that?
It is much harder than the act.
So our kids that go into the CTE courses and most of the programs have to take the whole act of place or thing? This would be a lot more difficult than that, but it's those technical skills. So I think what she's saying with the CTE, they are doing things that just sort anyone.
Right.
And this is another tool in their toolbox in those programs, but this, this is available for all these kids.
Right. And hopefully our students that are, you know, doing well academically and possibly not even involved in CTE classes will be able to brush up or use that Algebra II or training that they're learning and figure out how to apply it in a work situation. Because sometimes academic classes don't do a lot of that, and they'll hopefully score well too. It's expected, and granted, you know, this is the first year, this is the first trial run across the board for the state of Arkansas, but it's expected that an average student in high school, we're talking juniors and seniors, will be able to score about a level three or four on the pre-test, which will start them about midway in the curriculum. The curriculum has seven steps, and it's believed that they'll score about midways and need approximately a month of regular study to brush up and bring their skills up to the upper levels. Hopefully our kids are in better shape than that, but who knows? And that's just the average. You know, we'll probably have some that are stronger and some that are weaker than that. So we're going to try to plan in a way for the kids to have study time for this.
During the regular school time?
Yes. At the same time, it's not necessarily possible to realign the boat mid-year since this was kind of sprung on us. As a matter of fact, the state has not finished training the district test coordinators. I have just finished training five of seven required ones and two more optional ones. So they're still in the middle of rolling this out. So it's not that we're really late to the dance. We're not, we're about where most of the districts are. But hopefully they'll be able to complete it and test. The state is encouraging districts to align the curriculum more and more in this direction, but again, you know, you can't replan mid-year in October. So that will be a process that takes place, I would assume, over the next few years. And again, we'll know a lot more after this year. As far as testing windows, there are three assessments, and remember that everyone who graduates this year needs to at least have the opportunity and hopefully take the test before the end of the year, take all three of them. There's fall window and a spring window. Basically, it just, you know, pretty much skips spring break in the month of January. But they could still work on the curriculum during those off times, even though those are not testing windows. As far as an action plan, this is what we have worked out so far. St. Paul Grade 12 students have already started beginning to look at the curriculum and getting started. St. Paul is also planning to bring the 10th and 11th grade along, not, not to test this year, but to get them started. They haven't set testing dates yet unless Bruce has a new plan. I talked to Eric this afternoon.
They're looking at spring.
Right. They're looking at spring, and they will be setting those dates. Huntsville High is planning to train teachers on the curriculum during the staff development day, because we have enough students that we're going to have to have quite a few people knowing what's going on. We'll be looking at pre-testing and a beginning kind of a study period after that. We're going to aim for the applied math first, and have the students focus on studying that curriculum and hopefully test it before Christmas. We're looking tentatively at December the 7th, that would be before finals, and give them several days of a breather in between that and finals. And that way we can say there's one day or two to go. And then after Christmas break, we'll start with pre-testing and then working, stepping into the curriculums on workplace documents and graphic literacy. We felt like those two connect pretty well, there should be some overlap in the skills they need and the things they studied for those two, and we're looking at testing those the day that the 11th grade takes the ACT. Because when you pull all of the 11th grade out of the classes, you pretty much shut down the 11th and 12th grade classes, because, you know, the kids are so mixed at that level. So it makes sense that if all possible, if you've got to shut them down anyway, we'll grab 12th grade while they're kind of loose and put their time to good use.
So how many certified test givers do you have to have?
We have to have one for every 30 students that does not require accommodations, and then there's a much smaller ratio for students that require accommodations. So we'll have to have extras. I'm guessing probably eight to 10 all put together.
All these exams and everything are state-funded, correct?
Yes.
Okay, state-funded?
But there's need.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of. Are we responsible for those t, or for those test givers as far as paying for those tests? Does that make sense? Do we know yet?
It'll be during their contracted workdays. It will be just like when we administer the ASPIRE or the ACT or the math. It'll be worked in during the day.
Okay.
Okay, as far as an action plan, the state of Arkansas is going to pay for one complete set of three tests for each student. Which is good, but we also know our babies, and sometimes one test may not be quite enough. There is an option for the student to pay or for the district to pay for additional tests. Now, I'm, those of you who know me well, know that I'm fairly careful with my money. I do not think this needs to turn into a situation like the driver's test, where they go take it about six or seven times and never study until they figure out the answers to all the questions. I don't think that's a good option, considering this is going to cost money every time they take it. I've set up a criteria that I think would be the best choice for the Huntsville schools, and still give our children who deserve it the option of testing again if they either do not pass or do not score as well as they think they can.
Ms. Chapp, would you make that decision?
Um.
To who?
Thus far, it's my recommendation. I've talked it over with Audrey, but if the school board has a different opinion, we can always look at that.
No, I'm just asking.
I'm going to draw the tip.
They're $20 per test, so it'd be, would be $60 a student to retake the entire set. Which, you know, if we're talking just a handful of children, it's not that much money, but if it turns into a willy-nilly thing where somebody wants to retest six times and never studies, then that's an issue. And that's unwise spending, if I put it that way.
I think they should have to pay for it.
Well, but then again, because some students can't.
Is that upper echelon of that studying that hard, they couldn't get over $20?
I, I don't know, but this is, this is what I was looking at, and hopefully we come somewhere close to that. I set up some criteria and, you know, kind of lined it out, this is nothing official yet until it's all agreed upon, pretty much this group, but that the Huntsville schools would furnish no more than one additional work keys assessment in each of the three areas. So we would provide one chance for a child to retake each test if needed, following certain conditions. Okay? And that's that they work with their school test coordinator and make their intent to retake it known, that they start back with the pre-test and work all the way through the curriculum again to show that they're really serious about doing this.
And you'll be able to see if they've done that.
As district test coordinator, I could go in and reset everything. So that we, that's one reason why I would require contact and, you know, like signing maybe a small agreement that they're going to do this, is so that we can go in and reset their curriculum to the very beginning, so that we can prove, yes, they really did start all over and they really did work all the way through this.
Is that a self-paced thing?
It is self-paced, but as the test coordinators can go in and reset everything and start them over at the beginning. Which, you know, to me, that seems fairly reasonable. You know, if they're willing to retake the entire curriculum or wherever they test and whatever skills they need to work on, redo all that, I think it would be great if the Huntsville schools would pay that $20 to retake that test.
They may want to just pay it themselves to go and take that class again.
Well, they might, and, you know, that's an option. The other thing is $20 is the price for the state of Arkansas. So they will have to pay through the district if they want to pay the $20 fee rather than a much higher fee.
So if they score, there's three different parts of the exam. So if they score well on one part of the exam or the other, do they have to retake all three again, or can they keep a score that they have that they're happy with on one of the three?
The three parts are completely separate. The only time the three parts really connect is when ACT is awarding the certification, and they have to pass all three parts to receive the certification. The tests are totally independent other than that, so.
So they don't have to retake one if they're good?
Right. If they score beautifully on workplace documents and applied math, and the only one they had trouble with was graphic literacy, they can just retake that one.
Okay. So is the curriculum set up that way too?
Yes, the curriculums are totally separate. Where they study, you know, one set of lessons, then they study another set, then they study the third set.
So you can go back and reset just that one?
So anyway, what I'm hoping is that we could at least provide that for maybe, I, I honestly don't think with the requirement of starting all over and studying all the way through it again, I really don't think we would have more than a quarter of the tests retaken. And that would work out to be about $2,000. And I, you know, I would love to see our kids that really work for it have a chance, you know, have a second chance if they really earn it. But like I said, I don't want it to turn into the driver's test, because I don't want it to.
There's a way to measure that.
Right.
And you decide after that, so basically you go through your metrics and then you decide. And really, it's their decision.
Right.
Whether or not they make, but, but you would then come to, Ms. Audrey?
I would like to support Amanda in this, because if they're willing to put that much work into it.
Again.
Again, that shows they really want to do that. Now, I think we need to reevaluate before next year, because next year it won't be brushed, we'll be getting it in sooner in the year, and they'll have more study time. But I feel like this year they're, they're pressured on time and study time.
Here's a, here's a question I have, or concern I have, I should say. So I know you said it's going to be built in to regular days, right? Okay, but these teachers are still going to have to, whoever they are, they're still going to have to be added to their plate, more certifications, they're going to have to be given tests and et cetera, that normally they wouldn't have to give. Are these, is there any compensation to the teachers that's going to have to add something else to the plate?
The state has not provided yet.
Good question. Since coming up at number six.
She's doing it at the same time, they'll be doing the ACT, ASPIRE tests, too. They'll be.
So the teachers are the ones that give the ACT for. At least they don't grow up and say it anyway.
No, not during their contract with them. Now, like the ACT that's taken on Saturday, that, that's definitely.
Another thing that might figure into allowing a way for the students to retest is that a student must score at the bronze level or above on all three, or they do not receive a certificate at all. So if a student does well on two and then misses the cutoff by one point, they get nothing. If they're willing to re-study, should they have another shot at it? You know? You know, I'm all for looking after our babies, but I think they need to be responsible too. And I figure they can pay for it, or they can do without, if they're not willing to do the work to retake the curriculum and go through. It's like, it's like a teacher giving a student that fails a final a second chance, you know, telling them, you go study for X number of days and come back and I'll let you have one more chance before you fail on my class. It's that kind of a scenario. And I don't think that they should get endless second chances.
So the one thing then for us to pay for is that they have to go back through the curriculum again, the retest.
Going back through the curriculum, even the second time would be completely free. It's the retest.
Right. And I'm saying though, that's a requirement though, they have to go through the curriculum. And then they retake it again, and if they don't pass it that time.
Then that they.
That's on them.
They have to pay for that spread.
Right. That's on them. They get one chance from us. Now, if a student bombs all three, you know, we could be possibly, if they're willing to work through all three again, provide a retest for them. I think a lot of our students will do fairly well, there will be some that don't score where you would logically think they would wind up. And there may be a few that wind up just below the cutoff and want to retest. I'm really, I'm guessing we wouldn't have more than 25% of the tests retaken.
And after they've taken it once, and their, their requirement is met, as far as the state goes, they, they have a choice whether they take it again.
It's completely by choice.
So they can take the test, as long as they take the test once, we and they are meeting state requirements.
Right.
More state requirements. But that's a, it's a personal decision if they take it again.
Right. And I think, you know, if the district's going to help you do that, we should be able to see some serious commitment on their part.
Yep.
Can I ask the speaker a question? Where and when would they do the retake?
We would have to schedule separate testing sessions.
You'd need more teachers or something.
Yeah. The retakes will open a door that's going to be a lengthy process.
So they're saying, how many people do you have, teacher-wise? How many people do you have that's already signed up or agreed to basically get certified?
We haven't trained anyone yet. We will be looking at training teachers to administer the ACT and the ASPIRE and this pretty soon, and working, you know, within the faculty. But pretty much, if you're a certified teacher and you wind up doing some of this, so.
So Ms. Chapp, what, do you have a group that I can refer to?
We haven't picked a group yet. But the other thing is, the teachers that will be doing this are probably the teachers that would be babysitting the 12th grade while the 11th grade is taking the ACTs.
I totally understand what you were saying earlier about that.
The timing on doing this grade.
Yeah. It makes sense to do as much as possible. To put all three tests in one day is way too long. I mean, we would be running all the way to the last bell, and that doesn't include the students that have special accommodations or get extra time, and we have to provide for those needs too. So we have to have some leeway. But I think we can reasonably try to fit into, we can still eat up a good bit of a school day.
So what, what do you need for us to help?
I mainly wanted you to know what it is and what's going on, because Audrey and I have talked about reaching out to the community, possibly Juanus Lions, any other groups, to make sure that they know what's going on. This is something that's going to be new to Northwest Arkansas. If it's any help, the Rogers Little Chamber of Commerce is all over it right now and talking to businesses about, you know, developing policies where they have give preference to students with this certification. Rogers, you know, Ben, I'm sorry, Ben Villas is looking at it too. And so it's hitting Northwest Arkansas, and our community needs to know what it is if our kids are involved.
That's a great opportunity.
Except for kids. I mean, it's mandated, but it's still a good opportunity to begin.
It's a good mandate, so.
Right.
So I had this moment, as far as we're, you don't need anything from us to talk.
No, not unless you have a serious objection.
No, no.
Tasha has worked and found a little pocket of money we can kind of designate for this again. This is the first year, we don't really know how it's going to go. But as long as you're happy with kind of the way the requirements are, and it's a small amount of money, and you don't have any objections, let's go for it.
Well, since they have to put a little skin in the game by doing the Brooklyn over again, then I don't have a part to say.
Right. I don't want this to turn into anybody that shows that didn't wise, gets paid for. That's, that's not teaching them to be responsible.
We don't on the mail, we could have gone, we didn't have it. I just wanted y'all to be aware of it.
Wouldn't do it, honestly, you need it, if you don't, we don't.
And so just go ahead, though, and we haven't figured about, should we have approval?
What we've come to know from you is, if you're presenting and if you went through the process, we know that it's going to be right. So it's just best not taking.
And we could reevaluate before next year, because it'll look different, it'll be done a little bit differently next year as far as the curriculum part, and see how many kids ask to retake it, and know better about whether we want to do that or not.
We'll know a lot more about what we're dealing with after this first round. But at this point, you know, the legislature decided last May, the State Department didn't start telling people till July. Our trainings didn't start till the end of July.
So at any time that we need to, we can always come in and maybe do what, you know, make a motion to take care of what you need.
Okay.
As long as that's the plan, yeah, I don't think there are problems.
Okay.
Very good.
I just, I want to look after our kids, but you know, they're about to be grown, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you, baby.
All right. All right, next, next off, I'll be for questions travel, same call up the plate.
One of my former fourth grade students here asking the travel.
Miss May, so I'm Abby Richena, President of Arkansas State Department of Defense. Well, this case of paper is right here is an agenda for all of the travel dates and everything else we'll be doing. On the back is all the expenses and how much everything costs. Do you have raised enough money for everything on the cost breakdown? Every student has some money and some left over in case they want extra stuff on their own. I bring this field attention to get the go-kit into travel there. Indianapolis, Indiana for National Convention. The 26th, 33rd.
So you guys worked hard to get ready to be here.
We have, we've done multiple fundraising and borrowed time and effort into raising enough money to accomplish a trip.
That's it.
I'll tell you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say this PD, you mean you paid that already?
Yes. The only thing that has not been paid officially is parking, but we have that money raised already. We're just waiting on what type of vehicle we're taking. The biggest thing I want to tell you is for COVID, I mean, that's a big deal. Anytime we're in any building with lots of people, it's required they're wearing masks. The National Convention has its own requirement. Basically, anywhere in Indiana, I believe you go indoors, you wear a mask.
And how many kids, I'm sorry, how many kids are going?
Four kids and two bedrooms.
Gotcha.
What, what are we competing in?
We're not competing this year. I do have two American degrees that will be getting them on Saturday. Normally, we would have the National Chapter Award with COVID, everything went crazy, so I had it. We didn't have many activities. We were second in the state for food science. We were so close to being competing, but we're working on that. This is more of a leadership conference to that they're going to attend.
I like the motion.
Absolutely. I got a motion about Kevin, second to Dwayne, all in favor? Ah, motion carried.
Yeah, keep very well.
Enjoy, be safe. Great license and all the hard work y'all did.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming today. This chapel, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. All right, next, super junior reports.
Okay, first, we can have our district financial report. No major changes, the prepay endeavor money came in. That's why it looks quite a bit the same this year. We hope to keep getting that endeavor money from year to year. This possibility for this is last year will be funded for that. Okay, next is administrative court, and I have to give Jonathan all of the kudos for this. He prepared this and he has broken down by campus where there are additions or we lost kids.
These are through our preschool program, so it's not like physical head counts. I just want to make that clear. Not going around county kids.
Got you.
So current enrollment? 2,235. No, that's not counting prepay. We are down 11 this month from where we were last month. Any questions? He has that broken down very thoroughly. Next is COVID update. We had continued to see these criticism now from the Tuesday and Friday reports, but over the weekend, we did have a couple of positive cases. So we have had just a little bit of uptick. But notice in the district right now, we have seven positives total. We have a total of 48 students in quarantine. That's not including the seven positive. But look at the breakdown between home and school exposure. We have 22 kids of those 48 that are out because of home exposure and 25 from school exposure. But notice at middle school, 17 of those are schooled and that's from those cases. Actually, it's the end of last week, so just a little uptick there. And then we have one class that's out. Now, the next page is the state reports that comes out on Mondays, Thursdays.
Arkansas Department of Health.
We're on the last page. We've been off of this for a little bit, but we are on the last page of public schools with five positive cases as of last Thursday.
So that's still valid. Yeah.
So they, they list any school that has five or more positive cases.
The trend lines better. How do you feel better?
I feel much better. Now, early on, I did not, but I do feel better.
The trend lines better, yeah, I'm just, I'm not trying to put numbers on this, but.
And, and you know, we can trace that, like the middle school, that, that 17 back to the situation to see, you know.
I will say several of ours are vaccinated now too. So really some of the kids that were close contacts in that last one didn't have to quarantine because they were vaccinated.
And high school is seeing that often, vaccinations. And I don't know if you all have seen this news, but there's four schools in the state of Arkansas that are doing a pilot test to retain program, and I am looking into that. There's, there's a lot of retake to it. And some districts were saying they wouldn't even be able to get enough of the tests for them to get it done, especially if it was a large quarantine. But my question that I had emailed Amanda Britt, the lady through Department of Health, does this work for out of school exposure? And it doesn't. It's only school exposures. Well, we have, typically, we've been seeing mostly home exposures, so.
Counterproductive.
Yeah, and one of these four schools is taking about pulling out. So I'm keeping up with, it's Bentonville, Springdale.
Fayette.
No, Fayette didn't.
Or Smith. Is that correct?
I don't remember. In our, in our region, it was Bentonville, Springdale.
Pull out.
I'll know more and I'll keep looking into it, but right now, I, I don't think it's the way to go. But I'll definitely stay on top of it. I want to see how much works out for those districts. But if, if it included the, the home exposures too, that would be better. But then that child has to agree to wear the mask everywhere. They, they have to quarantine when they're not at school. So there's, there's some variables that would be beyond your control too. But it would get our kids back if it's school that we're having to quarantine, so I'll keep learning more about that.
I think this is a really good pleasure at the moment, feel better. Okay, next question, next administration report.
Let's just start with Jonathan and go all the way around and back down and end with Jennifer.
Last on the list. We finished our EEO five report, which is Equal Employment Opportunity Commission Report. Ms. Yates pulled that for me and I just, I punched it into the paper, so Ms. Yates did most of the legwork on it. We're getting ever so closer to our standards accreditation reports being compiled and finished and all the overrides that we need to be submitted and stuff like that. It keeps getting better and better each day and each, each week. It's just a long process. I don't, I don't know that I've felt like it's ever done just yet. We're going to start working on the civil rights data collection report this month. That'll be something that will be done continuously throughout most of the school year because they, they're only opening it up sections at a time. And we're just in the pre-assessment or pre, pre-part of it. And then in the winter, they'll open up another section that we can actually start putting in information for. And then master's facilities reports are coming up as well, so we'll be doing that within the next couple of months.
Nothing new in technology. We're just trucking along and, you know, trying to get Chromebooks in and repair it as quick as possible and getting back out for our kids, and the guys have been doing great looking that out, so shout out to them. But yeah, we're just, we're just continuing, moving along.
Maintenance end, everything's going fairly smooth. If y'all get a chance to go over on the practice field, look at the new Ford pod that came in. We go last Friday and it's all put together. And all we like is the plumbing and electric, and we're waiting on Carol Lecter to get their part done, so. It looks good.
It does look good.
It's a very well-built building. It's a very heavy building. It's one of the heaviest ones that the truckers said that they could, they could move. So really proud of that. I know Jennifer and Mr. Kane are, be, be glad to get in it and start, start using the classes. So custodian side, we still have some openings. It's hard to, hard to get people that, that really want to work, just to be honest with you. And we're struggling. I want to give a shout out to my employees, my custodians. They are doing a fantastic job. I've got three that are working, switching, alternating each week, working double shifts just to keep all the classrooms clean. And I've got some interviews tomorrow, so hopefully some of those will work out good and we can get some more hired. That's about it. I'm out.
The food service is doing good. We're moving along. We're struggling a little bit far as having enough staff. And we've had pull from different areas and working doubles and trying to keep it, keep it going, but we're doing good. We did get the dishwasher placed at the primary kitchen. We're just waiting on coordinating with some of our electrician plumbing and getting everything hooked up to finally be able to use it, but otherwise we're, we're doing good.
We've got a maximum school bus safety week coming up next week. We'll be having drivers and buses visit every campus, but everybody's blended. So we need to be supporting them in that. I feel like we're doing a better job of that now. That's all I got.
Okay, homecoming was last week and, you know, last year we didn't get to do all the fun stuff that we normally did. It's a big undertaking. Anytime we do homecoming with the parade and, and all the stuff that goes with that, but we've had lots of good feedback from parents, kids, community. Kids were very well behaved because they were excited to have it back, so that's, that's really good. If you saw the parade and you saw the CTE float, you probably saw some big metal dinosaurs. And welding made those. They, they built those and I was told that they're going to the place out past the high school that had their stolen. So they commissioned those to, to go out there. So now I'm going to have them build an eagle to put in the lobby. And we've even thought about maybe, Bruce brought it up, having some built to put in the arena, maybe later on. So that would be cool, have them go out there. Also, if you were at homecoming or, and you saw the fancy sashes that the band had on, they were glittery sashes. Mr. Johnson, the band director sewed those for the kids, so they had all that glitter and that bling. So our, our uniforms are a few years old, but he went and refashioned them so we could use them again. So I wanted to give him a big shout out because he knows I like all that glittery and such and new plans that they bought last year, so I wanted to talk about that. Red ribbon week is coming up at the end of the month. And at the high school, we, we say make smart choices. We don't just do it. You know, it used to be you don't do drugs, but we, you know, make smart choices. So there's a lot more that goes with Red Ribbon Week than it used to be. Other than that, we're doing great.
Like Matt said, we look at a lot of map data at the elementary especially. Same with what he was talking about his teachers. They come in PLCs and they got everything coded for date. Kind of gives you an idea of where your kids are at. Very promising to this point. Really excited about some of the growth we've seen in the kids with our map data. We took fall pictures last week. No problems there. Most everybody got their pictures made. Courtney was here with her FFA. They had a chili supper Friday night and a silent auction. And I want to say that they raised over $1,000 Friday night on that to, to help with their stuff. Our elementary P week girls basketball's in full swing. They're playing tonight at Huntsville. First time we've done the Huntsville League in several years. It's been really good for our kids to be up here and be in that structured organization. And they're going to have a little tournament at the end of it, and then our boys will start competing at the end of the month. And Mr. Scott, our elementary special education teacher, he's taking care of all that. Really proud of Ricky. He's doing a good job. We're going to kick off basketball. It's already here. Friday nights, blue and white. We're having dress up days this week. It was dress up like an older person today. Lots of good little kiddos with their silver hair and canes and everything else. And tomorrow is Hawaiian and tropical day. And to kick off Friday night, Ann staff is going to be there around 2:30 setting up, cooking hamburgers and hot dogs and going to kind of have a tailgate block party to kick it off and follow up the games with the dance afterwards. And we will be doing our pileups on Friday night. That's a big fundraiser for us. And bus safety coming up, Red Ribbon Week coming up, end of the nine weeks is here. Parent-teacher conferences coming up. It's a busy month, so we're just, we're, we're surviving and getting through.
We have kind of a boarding job.
Well, in my world, we've been doing some everyday behavior tools training, which is part of our ACT 1040, I never say it right, 1084. Working on behavior strategies for the teachers to use in the classroom to prevent any crisis behaviors coming up. Special ed program will be, or department's going to be monitored. It's our turn every three years for compliance and that'll start in January, so working on getting the preliminary stuff ready for that. And then October is National Bully Prevention Month. And working with the counselors in each building to promote bully prevention. Measures, strategies, prevention. They have, there's online programs they can do in the computer lab, there's posters, there's National Bully Day, or Bully Prevention Day, we're the same color and just awareness of that. So I know, I know all the counselors have been working on that and getting it started. No news is good news in my world, so.
And intermediate, we're doing what you just heard everybody say, but just to, to build off what Matt and Bruce said. We have an amazing staff at Huntsville Intermediate School and just like the data that they're talking about, the intermediate teachers are bringing the same data, so we really know our kids and we know where they're at academically in math and reading. And so we can start building on those, those strengths that they have and start bridging those gaps that we see in the learning. So I just want to commend the intermediate staff on, on their work that they're doing. Everyone's working really hard. We have flu shots on Wednesday. We have school pitchers on Thursday. Book fair is going on at the intermediate school. Like Harry said, bus safety next week. And then we have parent-teacher conferences next week as well.
It's not often I get to just say ditto to everybody else. I usually kick it off, but.
It's hard to remember to.
I love it. I love it. It's actually good.
You got to spoke.
Yeah, exactly. So yes, ditto to all of that. And today I was visiting with my instructional facilitator, Ms. Mullenix, who was, you know, speaking of the maps data, and boy, did we learn how important the fourth nine weeks were this year because our beginning of the year test data, which we spent the month of, or September, testing all of our kids in our maps, the NWEA maps. We went, been spending last week kind of looking at that data and in most areas, we're at 20% at the beginning of the year than when we were at the beginning of the year last year. So not only are our teachers working, you know, they've doubled down and, and they are working so very hard and they know those kids. But boy, you can really see it's paying off with the kids. And so we're excited about where we're at and excited to see where we grow to. In addition to all the busyness that October is, it just is a busy month with Red Ribbon Week and, and all of that. We also have our PTSO back in full swing at Watson Primary. We're very excited to have a lot of new parents eager to help support the needs of our students. We will, they are going to allow us to have a traveling pumpkin patch. We will, they are going to allow us to have a traveling pumpkin patch at the end of this month. So while we are still kind of cautious about taking field trips, we're having field trip brought to us. And PTSO is supporting our students that way. So we're really excited about that as well, so. Yes, every kid gets a pumpkin or, you know, the big, the fun thing is the corn, right? When you go and they bring the trailer with the corn. I know St. Paul's done it before, so.
It's just the big green tree. Those kids love it and they have like sand toys that they're bringing for them. But they do learn about growing.
We're excited.
Thank you guys very much.
I know it's not my turn, but I want to say October is National Breakfast Month. And I just want to write on all these administrators and the, we meet every Tuesday morning. And I, they may not agree, but I personally always look forward to it. It's, it's a great group and I'm very.
Excellent. Next, new business?
Okay, first item on agenda, this is an annual thing that we have to get approval of. And it's just your list of all the employees whose income increased five percent in here. And shout out to S.Jake, she does this together and notice in the yellow, she has documented the reason, whether it is step change or if they were dropped for any reason because they, well, the reason would be they missed over their days. But the COVID additional pay at the end of the year affected several, as far as five percent. It's just hard.
So it was five percent across the board?
Now, any employee whose individual salary changed five percent or more has to go into the report.
Well, and it's not technically their salary. It's their gross wages. So the majority of those people on there, it's because of COVID additional pay they received. Either from the additional pay that we gave to all of our employees for each day they worked. Or because of our custodial food service that had to step in and work extra because somebody was out. Or even the summer program where food service workers came in and worked. That was additional pay. So it takes their gross earnings from 1920 and compares it to their gross earnings in 2021. And if there's a five percent increase or more, they're flagged on it.
So you have a motion to approve this.
Same thing we do every year.
Yes, it's the same thing. And all of them on there this year is because of COVID additional pay. Or because, I mean, you have a food service worker, you give them five extra dollars per day, that's probably going to bump them up five percent. Some people had a huge increase, but it was probably because they were in transportation or custodial or food service and they had to step in and work extra because somebody was quarantined or out.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
First by Kyle. Second by Dwayne, Paul in favor. Aye. Oath. Which carried.
Next, signing our monthly approvals to transfer money from our main account that we're talking about, Brady.
Should we talk about that before we vote?
Sure.
I just got a few questions on that before we go to Matt. Do we know like, are we on budget right now for the center?
Yes, but for example, last week, we, they're boring and they hit rock. So just things like that. But as far as budgets, that's including the bond money.
Right. So should, should we sit down and talk to proper before we, I mean, I hate to start spending everything we got and then we get down to the crutch time that we owe. We're in the hole. So should we like sit up and talk to them, you think? Sometime soon or?
Sure, we can have them come in in October. We can have a special meeting and have them come in and present.
I just, I just, what, what do you think? I mean, we're, we're getting close.
That's a good idea.
From the money that we got right now, we're getting real close to, it ain't going to take much more than we'll, we'll have it spent from what I see, so.
I think that, I think we should have.
I just wonder what would be a good time to?
I think we should have them come in. We have a special meeting. We can have a next board meeting. We could have them come in, one meeting here in the next couple of weeks or so and just give us an update, status report where we're at.
Which I already had talked to Scott Murray and they're planning on doing that anyway. You know, that's a, but they have to stay in what they agree, you know, so they can.
Yeah, right. I think it's, I think it's a good suggestion, extremely good suggestion. I just thought, it's okay. I might as well just put it on the next agenda.
What about, I mean, the timeframe was what, the end of next year? Is that right?
November 16th of 2022, yeah.
And I guess my question for them, main question would just make sure that are we still on that same timeline as, as of right now?
Yes, we are, we are on that timeline. And they, you know, this summer they hit some really good weather.
Yeah, it worked out good.
Yeah, they had true game, like games time on this.
They're a little bit ahead of schedule. They've had two weather days so far.
Yeah.
They've had two, they've only had two weather days having to work.
Very minute right here.
And in a minute, I was going to show some pictures from the ground and you can see the progress.
And I'll, I'll tell you something else. I think that if we, whether we're meeting on the next time that we meet or if, if we do a special meeting for that matter and have Sarah Crawford come give us a status report. I think that all of us as board members and administration that everyone wants to go, I think we make a little trip over there for 15 to 20 minutes and just see, just see where things at, then come back.
And I'm not saying that's, that's maybe by the end of this year or beginning of next year.
I think, I think next month. I think that's a great suggestion.
Well, November would be a year.
I mean, it's front of town still.
If the weather keeps up, it'll, it'll.
Sorry, sorry for your interruption.
Yeah, no, you're good.
So, so for next meeting, I'll do Sarah Crawford, have it answered. And get a status report. And what do you guys think about taking a little quick tour over there, 15, 20 minutes prior to meeting? Y'all good for that?
Sounds good.
So just have them meet us there at six o'clock?
Yeah.
Get in now. Now you can enter. I'm assuming they don't gate it. You can enter at the.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, mail there at six. Brief, brief, you, see what's happening and come over. Okay. All right, very good. Okay, so back to the transfer of millions money. I made a motion to transfer millions money. My motion. First by Terry, second by Kyle, or Kevin, Kyle in favor? Aye. Oath, which carried. Okay.
And next, I just want to touch base with you. The bond money, Tina and I have talked about this. I feel like we need to put it in its own account. I mean, we could add it in where the money is now left in the millions money. But I would like to put it in its own account where we can monitor every penny of it to know when we have to start utilizing that money and what happens, so.
So it's not cold mangled? Yeah.
Tina, do you want to add anything to that? It'll, it'll be more record keeping and look for her, but I'd like to be able to look at it.
What am I just going to?
So.
Tina's all right with you?
Yeah, let's keep it separate.
I totally agree. Tina's like another account.
We're going to add another spreadsheet to the mix. I, I just wanted to touch base and get your opinion on that.
I think it's a good motion to add another account for the bond money.
I got a motion by Dwayne.
Say it.
Second by Kyle, Paul in favor? Aye.
Well, at the same bank where the permanent money is.
Where we got the best interest. Okay, I agree with that.
And Tina did touch, which I like you to show. She did touch base with the bank. And she got back with the interest rate that it would be, so still.
Big CS.
Okay. All right, next item, something we need to discuss. Item D, name of the activity center. We know that, we know that CR Crawford is to the point that they have got to have a decision made on the activity center. Basketball would make him, what name is going to go on it because of the electrical wiring, lighting and stuff that they're going to be putting on the side of the building. And they literally need that this week. So we've kind of come to the point where we need to make a decision tonight about what we're going to do with that. I know that, and we talked about it months, several months ago. We talked about at one point the AT Smith donation money. And that we had discussed about the AT Smith, Georgia May Smith gymnasium. Georgia May. Georgia May. And so. Our activities. Activity center, right. And so I'm opening that back up and I'm going to lean on some of you a little bit. I wasn't there when Mr. Smith donated the money to the, to the school district. So I didn't know all of the details of what was taking place or was total or not total. So we just want to make sure we do what was total and what the right thing is, so.
Well, I'm going to have Bailey pull it up, the renderings and show you the area where it's projected to be as well.
Talking about the name? Yeah, okay.
Notice how the brick changes a little bit where it says Huntsville Activity Center. So it would need to fit, which obviously the letters can, the size can be changed, but. Part of the reason for the, the decision need, needing to be made now is those lights, those letters are lit. That's what I'm trying to say. And so.
And photo cell.
They'll have to run more conduit up higher or it's going to affect that, but.
And they're that, they're to that point that they've got to put the conduit and wiring in this coming week in order to prepare for whatever we decide to put on. Forgive me, Bailey, there's nothing on like gable, so it's just a wall there. So what was Mr. Smith promised? Well, Mr. Smith made no demands. He basically made a donation. We, as a board felt like that's the least we could do, Terry. We did, you know, of course, I don't know, forgive me.
From, and you, I thought y'all was here, but from what I remember, you know, we, we asked him, you know, if he wanted CTE, if he wanted.
Couldn't remember if you're on the board, Kyle, thank you.
Or if he wanted to be affiliated with the activity center. And I think he said activity center. But I don't know if he wanted, he wanted Georgia May or.
The graduation, I think, from what I, what I did speak to him. And that was at the groundbreaking ceremony, actually. Whenever I spoke to him about it, his biggest thing was about the, the graduation part. He wanted to, that was. That community to have. That meant something to him as far as the graduation back in Huntsville kind of scenario. So that's what I'm talking. So we as a board felt like based on that, that's the least we could do. As far as the naming of it, I'm hopeful that it'll fit upon approval.
Well, Bailey, from the option, that CR Crawford also mentioned the option of.
You got a picture, a picture.
Of across the top.
We're good.
Yeah.
There's, there's that one.
As many letters as it's going to be, it'll probably be fit better across the top. Yeah, can you, can you, can you zoom out or get a picture of the, the whole side of that building to some degree? Ohio's office. I knew there was something up there.
This is the majority of the front of the building.
That's it.
Yeah, you tell, does this help you any to look at this rendering? I think it is. Well, the, the fronts, they're front of here.
Yeah.
On this one. This is the most updated version. So right across the top was an option.
So we could go here?
Yes. Right now on the rock wall, they, on the front, they are right here above this first transition. They started that.
It's above the Wayne's Cove.
Yes.
And they're almost to where the letters go. Now Wayne's Cove is high. How high is that Wayne's Cove?
Six, eight, fifty, probably, I don't know. It's close, close between five and six feet. Will be over six.
The one thing they did say to consider is that if we do put it above, you know, this Huntsville Activity Center and we want to re-center it, that's going to shove it, everything down, which may make the lettering smaller.
You talking about going above?
If we, if we added it under this border, but you know, above the Huntsville Activity Center. And you would want to keep it aesthetically centered between the two borders.
Maybe we lean on CR Crawford, the architect's relief, Craig and his team, and ask where that would be best positioned.
Especially after spelled out.
Yeah, where, where he would feel would be best positioned.
I do like that about on the top, probably the idea that across the top, that was not a book better. That was kind of what Scott was leaning towards at our meeting last week, yes.
Whatever.
Across the top.
Is, is for you all to make a decision specifically what you want it to say. And then we could send it to Architectural Plus tonight.
Perfect.
And they could show us a rendering both ways.
That's what, that's what.
Probably get charges for the rendering.
Probably so, but I, I want everybody to feel good about it either way.
So we could take my Huntsville.
You did, we spent money up here.
Audrey, so Huntsville would be called and Georgia May activity center.
That, that's what I need y'all to decide. I just need to know specifically what you want it to be called.
So do we want to say, so, so does it need to say AT and? Don't want your May Smith? Yeah, I want to make, I want to make a motion there. We don't need to say AT Smith and Georgia May Smith. They need to say AT and Georgia May Smith. AT and Georgia May Smith Activity Center is, is what, what I think we need to do as far as a motion for Ms. Kimball. Kyle, go ahead.
I'm okay with that. I don't know.
Dwayne?
Can I make a suggestion? I, I know everything you went on there, but when we have people come in from like different counties and stuff, when they're looking for that building, they're going to be looking for the Huntsville Activity Center. So if it was across the top, it would look really nice. And down low, if you would put the Smith's name, so when people are at the building and they're looking at the building, that's going to be their focus.
I don't know that we could put it down there though. You talking about where it's at now? Well, if you did what your suggestion was at the top and then, I don't know if there's back to what Steve, I don't know. That would be a CR Crawford question to see if you could get that sleeve and what do you want.
Well, we got, we got two options. We can pre-pipe it or pre, for electrical conduit.
Scaven it.
Scaven it in. Or we'd have to do a raceway on the inside of the building. Which part it would be in, if it stayed on the right side, would be in one of the stairwells. On the, the bottom part. On the top part, it would be noticeable. So it's a lot cheaper to do it now than we'd have to add it later.
And we can do what Mary's saying. I mean, the letters of the names, it's not going to be a whole lot more letters than Huntsville Activity Center. But if you want it together, that's, that's another thing we need to know is if you want it all together, if it could be separate like that. And we can, we can ask for renderings of both ways. We, we just need to know specifically what you want it to say.
Well, I mean, in my thoughts, you would, you could make one say what you wanted to say with the lights on and then the other one, it would have to be lights on it. I mean, couldn't you make a, have the name on it, it's not, it's not lit up? I mean, if you just want Huntsville school district.
Huntsville Activity Center across the top.
Way up at the top? Yeah, you want that lit up?
I think you could still light it. I think you're just going to like, Steve was telling you, have to size those letters down at the bottom a little bit.
Yeah.
Instead of having a, I don't know if they call, go ahead.
Instead of having a 14 inch letter, you may have to go to an eight inch.
Right, so if you're fine, I, well, I'm assuming the font will be the same, just the size of the letter. And still light it, just photo silk. I mean, this is like a, I mean, just put a photo cell to it. I'm assuming, yes, if you just like to, like a sign basically. You can have it AT, AT and Georgia May Smith Activity Center, but you can still have, you know, Huntsville Eagles, Huntsville Eagles, something of that nature on it too. We got Eagle on it. Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying. For that reason, you know.
Well, I don't know exactly what, who else talked to AT and what he's been promised, but whatever we told him, we need to stick to it.
Yeah.
I like the Huntsville Activity Center on the outside. And on the inside, if you had Smith graduation ceremonial, whatever, about like over the half court or something. Just an idea. Or like I said, or on the top of the thing, or on the court.
It's our decision. We got, we got to make it.
And the animals, the lighting and the carpet, that's not a problem. I think that can still be done because we're building it up.
Yeah, that's not, that's not a problem.
It's going to go where that says Huntsville Activity Center now.
That's going to be a big game changer.
Right. Yeah, because you got.
Like, I mean, they need to know tomorrow.
Tomorrow, because they're basically holding off right now. They're already at that break line. So waiting on that. Well.
We do not have a big black on the outside.
This way, yeah, we just told them to put it on the building.
Ideally tomorrow, but you know, if we ask for renderings, we can solve them in the next week.
I think we get renderings and take a look at it and see how it comes out. In fact, Steve's calling in on the outside of the Huntsville Activity Center on the top and.
We're not going to be putting anybody else's name on the inside of that evening, right?
No, we haven't discussed that.
So why couldn't we just have a wall there with that, you know? So why couldn't we just have a wall there with that, you know, not donated by or whatever, just in recognition of or something, in big bold letter or something with his name on the inside?
Yeah, that's not what we told him, Terry, is the issue.
No?
Yeah. So.
That's a, that's a good idea.
Great suggestion. We're just kinda, I just, I think the rendering, I wish we could see them. I don't know how quick Craig could drum those up for us, but.
So let's do this, Audrey. Take, um, take the A.T. and Georgia Mae Activity Center. Take that, send that over to them, have them draw a rendering of what that's going to look like in two different locations. Okay? Have them get that back to us ASAP.
So you want it, the, all those words across the top in one rendering and all those words down here in one rendering?
To see what it's gonna look like.
What if we put Huntsville Eagles at the very top? To address them knowing where they're at, and then the, uh, Georgia Smith Activity Center there where that is.
I'm talking about that out of the thing. Run it by me, you two.
Huntsville Eagles at the very top, so if they drive them by, big letters, knows that it's Huntsville. And then when they pull up, partying out or whatever, walk up there, then they see the Georgia Smith.
I just think it's gonna be more noticeable for people to see A.T. Smith's name and stuff when they're standing in front of the building. If it's down low than if they're traveling there. I mean, when they're traveling there, they're not gonna pay attention to that. They would pay attention to Huntsville. Exactly. But when they get there standing outside the building, they'll see his name and hers and they'll be like, oh.
Just so the.
Repeat that again?
Well, Huntsville Eagles across the top.
Got you.
Way across the top.
Got you.
Wouldn't it be good to put Huntsville Activity Center and then his Activity Center?
I agree.
But if we had Huntsville Eagles at the top and then him Activity Center when they got up there?
Correct.
Well, totally, totally.
I think that works.
Or Home of the Eagles.
Huh?
Or Home of the Eagles.
What I was saying a while ago, Home of the Eagles.
Isn't that what that old woman says?
That's out of spite of the Huntsville thing, though, that you're thinking, if it just.
I think then they could tie it to, this is where I need to be. And then when they get there and they get out of their vehicle and they're standing from the building, they will see A.T.'s name.
I don't know, I'm gonna do it. Don't waste money having them draw stuff.
Right, yeah.
Bailey, can you draw on that?
Bailey?
Come on, Bailey, say something.
Oh, Bailey.
Live right now.
Oh, you're live, oh, I see what you're saying.
Bailey, we two charged you to do that. Everybody else charges when they start drawing, I'm telling you.
The three of you words you can, you can draw on, but I see what you're saying.
Check his hourly rate over there.
The Huntsville Eagles.
Well, we can, well, well, we can still do, we can still do, we can do just like what Terry's talking about at the top. Put Huntsville Eagles at the top, okay? And then a bit of talk down here on the right for Huntsville Activity Center, A.T. and Georgia Mae Smith Activity Center.
Perfect.
Okay? And then have them, they should charge us by them.
No.
But have them draw up a quick rendering of that and send it back just so we can see it and make sure it don't run terrible to, to what we're thinking it's gonna look like. And then they got their answer. See what I'm saying?
How are all the other gymnasiums named? Tanya, you go to a bunch of them?
I like Home of the Eagles.
I agree.
Most of them, most of them is Home of the Bobcats.
Cause they know they're in Huntsville.
Home of the Bobcats, you know, it's, most of them go to.
You want my mouth?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So will we have St. Paul using this Activity Center, too?
They could.
They could.
Okay, like for graduations and ceremonies, things like that? So now I'm limited to just Home of the Eagles. So another option you could do is A.T. and Georgia Mae Smith Center at the top and, or either place instead of Activity Center. So you don't have Activity twice and then Huntsville Activity Center. So that's not just for the Eagles, it's inclusive to the entire district.
Well, but if we go to St. Paul, we go to St. Paul, it's Home of the Saints.
Great suggestion, though.
But I, I agree with you. I see, totally what you're saying.
Totally what you're saying. Girls, we all from them, it's, uh. Totally. Totally on them, and we roll it in, Steve. So what is, those letters you say are, uh, forgive me, what's?
I believe it, I believe it fourteen inches.
So those are fourteen?
Mm-hmm.
You got, so if we did, their scale's probably gonna change. Home of the Eagles on top, that's gonna probably increase. Whatever, whatever that is architecturally, whatever works.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna have to increase the size, uh, if you go Home of the Eagles or whatever, you go across the top.
Cause your span.
You, you're gonna have to fit your span.
Right.
They're proportional.
Yeah, everything's gonna be proportional.
So we Home of the Eagles and then we, basically, if we have to go down to eight inches, I'm, I'm good with that.
No, either, either way you're gonna go, it's not gonna cost much, except for the conduit.
No, and now's the time. And the other thing, too, is the photo cells, all of that'll.
It'll be on the same, same photo cell.
Do you, do you need a motion on this, right?
I would like a motion for what the name is going to be.
Well, you understand, you know, so you, you got down there on the right, A.T. and Georgia Mae Smith, and it's M.I.E., correct? And it verified it.
It is M.I.E., it is M.I.E.
Okay, M.I.E. Yep.
Do you want to say Home of the Eagles or Home of the Huntsville Eagles?
Dwayne's got Huntsville Eagles.
What do y'all want?
Home of the Eagles.
Home of the Eagles.
Home of the Eagles.
Home of the Eagles at the top and then the A.T. and Georgia Mae Smith Activity Center in the right corner. If they can get us something back tomorrow, maybe to at least take a look at it, correct?
We'll ask. We've got the email. They're, they're waiting to hear from us.
Right, I mean, you know.
I mean, I think that plan falls in line and keeps us on schedule where they need to be.
So they can keep, they can keep.
Yes.
Bailey could do it if you had the CAD, the.
Yeah, I mean, I can do it when we leave here. I just can't do it live because I'm connected to a separate computer.
So I think we do that and then lean on him on the size of the, back to Steve, and I know he just thrown because of the span, the top's gonna change.
Right.
Change the size of that. I think we could.
And they will know already to have the conduit there. I mean, this.
Yes, because we're, we're.
One could know.
Yeah, if the font works, yeah, so I've got, I think we just lean on it, don't.
We'll, we'll just lean on Architecture Plus to make it fit and.
Yeah, and make it to scale, yes, and, and no offense to you at all.
No, no, that's fine.
You're a man, you know what you're doing. Um, we're just sort of wandering around here in the dark.
Go ahead, give me, you give me a motion, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, that's why it stopped.
It's gonna say.
Home of the. Home of the.
And then the base, and then the bottom.
A.T. and Georgia Mae Smith Activity Center on the right.
So the top, so let's just.
I got a second material. First, Kevin's second material. All in there.
It's the.
Oh, sure.
Sorry, is the and, is it an and symbol or are we spelling out the word and? I'll just need to know, I, I know that's particular, but I'll need to know.
That's a serious thing.
It is, and I think it's, I think depending on how much, probably the sin, probably the symbol.
I think it's a symbol.
Well, that's what I was.
It's gonna take less faith, and I think it will be, and I, that's good, I wrote it out with the symbol on my here.
Yes, it's what I did and I.
Depending. Depending on how much.
Yeah, depending on how much, but I think, we can tweak it, but it's a sign.
Be the same thing as what we got in CTE building.
Right.
Career and technical education.
And it's a symbol.
It's a symbol.
I would end the symbol up here. Are you good, you got, you got that?
Yes, I just wanted specific wording.
Do not misspell Georgia Mae.
George, Georgia's spelled like the state, and I just pulled it up, M.I.E.
Okay.
I, I do have one more clarification.
Do not misspell A.T. on it.
Does, does Home of the Eagle, well, it's not her that's gonna have to type, it'll be me if it comes back wrong. Is it?
Bailey's fault.
Home of the Eagles, is that gonna be lit or no?
Yes, uh, we gotta light it.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just, we're just, we're just running the conduit up, we'll put it all on the same circuit and all on the same photo cell, done. One's lit, they're both lit.
And I just a quick question. I know that on this rendering, is this, is that box office with?
Box office is lit, it's neon.
Yes, oh, wow. Uh, yeah, that's got wow factor.
All right, thank each and every one of you for that.
And forgive me, just real quick, the eagle lit, too, Steve?
Yes.
Okay.
Just like what C.T. is.
Yeah. What's that mean?
I see what the red is.
Yeah. C.T. building. Steve, thank you so much for your help with Bailey. Um, we were just gonna, gonna push through it.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, next we got, uh, transfer requests.
Did you guys want to get the drone pictures or no?
Yeah, we're, we're not done, we have one.
I didn't know that we had drones ready.
Bailey.
I would love to.
We meet with C.R. Crawford every, and Architecture Plus every other week, and, um, when we were out there last Thursday, well, you actually, what day did you make these drone pictures?
These were Friday, Thursday and Friday.
The aerial view is really impressive.
Yeah, this is just the overview. This is a picture of what it was a month ago, September ninth. And then this was a month after that.
There's bleachers.
Yeah, so they've added, they finished the east wall last week. I mean, they still go washing and everything, but the brick is laid.
Out by the street.
Street?
You're looking to the south. You're on the north end, looking to the south here.
This is the east wall right here.
They hit the rock on, Ken?
Yes, doing the, the bore for the wall.
Yeah, you can see the trench right here for that bore that they've come in.
How bad?
Oh, I think it ended up being almost, almost twenty feet.
A rock?
Yeah.
Twenty foot distance?
Yeah.
Twenty feet, or they hit twenty feet.
Could be worse.
They ran, they ran out of it after about twenty feet.
And then they laid the precast concrete for the bleachers last week.
Wow. What a big slip.
Well, what they're working on this, they're, they're starting putting up the steel and, uh, so that they can get that ready for the concourse pour.
Perfect. I went out there a couple times and you, it's constant. There's somebody moving constantly.
And this is south looking north, so this is, uh, where the state will be here. And this was just that lower parking lot that, that they are doing, too. And that was it.
Pretty awesome.
Bailey, thank you.
Thanks, sir. I'm excited to get out there with all of us to look. Great suggestion, Bill. All right, uh, transfer request. I need a motion to accept the transfer request. First, with Dwayne.
Second?
Second by Kevin, all in favor? Aye, motion carried. Uh, personnel resignation hires and transfers, I need a motion to approve.
What's my motion?
First, with Terry. Second, Dwayne, all in favor? Aye, motion carried. Audrey?
Personnel resignation certified, Melissa Watson, Huntsville Middle School teacher, December thirty first, classified. Vicky Gibbs, food service, Chad Davis, Huntsville Middle School custodian, Courtney Haddick, Huntsville Elementary School food service. Cricket Boyd, St. Paul custodian and bus driver, Reta Crowe, Watson Primary School custodian. Hires classified, Crystal Backer, St. Paul custodian, Melissa, rubber dress, Watson Primary School paraprofessional. And teachers, or excuse me, transfers classified, Casey Julitz from food service to Watson Primary Custodian.
Very good. Any other comments for the board? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I wanna talk about the, uh, I asked Audrey to send me a copy of, of what it takes for someone to be put on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
For the public. I just got, uh, I've been thinking about the fellow that came and spoke and stuff's going around the country right now, and just wanna run this by you. Right now, it's a one-page thing that our, the procedure is, and it encompasses quite a bit of stuff in that one page, but, and I don't know what it comes out of, but on the page that I had, it said section one fourteen. What is that?
It's your ASBA policy, the board policy.
It said meeting agenda, and it was last updated or revised back in, uh, twenty sixteen, so it's been a while. And, uh, it says district patrons must submit their requests at least five days before a board meeting. The written request must be sufficiently descriptive to enable the superintendent and board present to fully understand and evaluate its appropriateness to be on the agenda. Well, um, what I'm wondering is whenever they get ready to speak, I know they have an idea of what they want to talk about, but I don't know if they can put it succinctly in, in words or if they should have to, you know, to, to be able to address this. Now, it says, I doubt that they can have ten minutes at least, and there's no limit, that's the amount of people that can speak. So, um, it could be on the agenda.
If they are on the agenda.
Right, but I'm saying there's no limit on how many people that could be put on the agenda.
Correct.
If, if whatever they send you, you know, you think it's worthy to be put on the agenda. So I'm just wondering if we should be those, those individuals that determine what should be able to be put on the agenda or what they're gonna talk about. And so what I'm wondering is, would it be, how bad would it be if we had some type of, um, signup sheet even here with some rules that said that if you wanna be able, if you wanna be able to speak tonight, for instance, you had to come early enough to be able to fill out that form, sign your name, and then we'd give them like three minutes or something. Three minutes, two and a half minutes, whatever, and have a maximum of maybe ten per meeting. And so, uh, and on that sheet, I just wrote down some things like, uh, they've got three minutes or less, they cannot yield their time to others. You know, so four of them came in and put their name on it, then only one of them spoke or whatever. Uh, of course, no personal attacks. We could put whatever we wanted in this list, but no personal attacks, no foul language, abusive language, whatever. And then ten people, uh, at the max. And like I said, we could add whatever else restrictions we wanted. But the main thing is for them to be able to speak and not necessarily have to tell us what they want to talk about. For instance, he comes up and I wouldn't think that he would talk for three minutes about the weather, but might, you know what I mean? Or he might, you know, wanna talk about the A.T. Smith thing or whatever, you know, but we let him speak for three minutes, whatever. And then we can either, uh, the board can, can or does not even have to respond to them. And then the board, the board may choose to discuss the issues presented at a later meeting. Let's go, we're not under any obligation to do it. So in other words, um, they can pretty much just get up and say, I got a problem with this. Or I was thinking on the way over here today, what if they said, I'd like to brag on a teacher or whatever, and that's what they want to talk about? They stand for three minutes and brag on the teacher how well they're doing, whatever, and we say, thank you, and they sit down, and Mr. Jones gets up next, and Ms. Smith or whatever. And, um, I don't know, it just seemed like we could be open, transparent, we would have to monitor what they were gonna say, make them think about exactly how they were gonna say it or whatever, I don't know. So, what do you think?
I think it's, uh, I think it's a good idea. I mean, I really do, Terry. What, uh, but I think that we're gonna have to, we need to make sure that we put it into play, um, the right way. Because it's, we're dealing with a governed body, so to speak, that we have to have the law and have to try to keep it in an orderly fashion, which I think the three-minute scenario that you talked about is the idea. As long as we can, not, we can't, of course, talk about individual people, you know, and all, but that's a, that's a total disaster. But then there's also, we need to, we need to look, I need to look, um, and research the ASBA stuff a little bit, too, to see what the, what it tells us. And I know you have some already, so I definitely think it's something we should talk more about.
So the ASBA guidelines.
Yeah, here's the ASBA policy. I have, I have a train, and I mean, we follow ASBA. And then, um, every year, y'all vote to, you know, update policies, and this policy, he's right, it hasn't changed since sixteen. I mean, every year.
This policy hasn't changed.
Right, it, you vote to renew the A.C.A., but no, the policy hasn't changed since sixteen. But those times and minutes are filled in, the, the district chooses those, and in the past, for whatever reason, it was ten minutes, which is more than a lot of districts do.
That's a lot, I look, yeah. I was just thinking.
I think there's reasons behind that protocol to.
I'm sure.
Know what they're gonna talk about.
I think it was, I think it's designed, you know, to protect us, if you will, but, but I don't, I'm wondering how we're gonna get hurt. And I don't know, because I'm, you know, I don't know all the scenarios, but if we let, you know, Mr. Smith stand up there and speak for three minutes, if he's not abusive, he's not using language, he's not calling you, you know, sorry person. You know, no personal attacks, you know, he's not attacking a teacher, not attacking a coach. He's just telling us what he thinks, what he thinks, what's on his mind, or his praise or whatever, and in three minutes, he's finished. And you, as the president, can say, you know, I'd like to address that, or let me think about that, and we'll get together next meeting or whatever. You know, so, and if we look at it only ten, then we're not inviting, you know, the entire city down to have their three minutes. And then they can come back next week, or another guy can, or next person can, or whatever, do it again next week if you want to do, so.
But here's what I suggest. I suggest that, that, uh, all of us as a board think about this and think about each individual ideas about what they would like to do about this, and the next meeting, we make a decision on what we wanna do.
Sounds good.
How's that? Everybody decide what they think, going down next meeting, and we discuss it.
Good suggestion.
Thank you.
Too much motion to the during.
You do? First, with Dwayne.